All right, the hour has arrived, so welcome everyone to the board of zoning board of appeals for the town of Wakefield on Wednesday, February 12th. Going to remind everyone that the meeting's being recorded, it will be on the town's website within a couple of days. Start by taking attendance, Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Pat Field.
Here.
Phil Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Humphries.
Yeah.
And I'm Tom Lucy and obviously I am here. There is no new cases tonight, so there is no legal notice to read. We do have a couple of continuances, so as a custom, we will read those into the record. If anyone's here for those hearings, they will be continued. First one is via a letter from attorney Brian McGrail dated today to the board regarding thirty-three West Water Street LLC, case numbers twenty-five, three, twenty-five, four, and twenty-five, five. Please continue this matter until your meeting on February twenty-sixth. We're still working with the Department of Public Works on final conditions.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter to our February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none.
Just a question for the attorney McGrail, you there? Brian?
Yes.
Do you think, you know, there were several outstanding items, you think? Assuming you get through everything with DBW, then in two weeks, you'll have the other stuff too. I think there were some updates to final, final plans. And I don't know if the finding, conditions, that kind of stuff. So you think everything will be ready?
We think so. Yeah, we're done with EPW. They signed off on Friday, but it was too late to do their revisions for the, for a submittal.
Okay.
No, we're optimistic. If not, it will just be two more weeks after that, so.
Okay.
We're up for that. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chair. I was just curious where the other things.
No problem. It's always good to know. So with that, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters continued. Next letters from attorney Brian McGrail dated today to the board regarding seven Pittenham Avenue, case numbers twenty-five, nineteen, twenty-five, twenty. Please continue this matter until your meeting on February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and that we are working on revisions to the plans with the neighbor. Please also let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at seven Pittman Ave to our February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to render and file a decision till April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. Regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Nope.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That matters continued as well. Next up on the agenda is cases twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-two, one fifty-four, and one fifty-eight Salem Street. We had, if board members recall, we had appointed Chip Tarbell as a special representative from the board to work with the applicant regarding architecture and other matters that came up at our board meeting last month. So with that, Chip, maybe I'll turn it over to you and Mr. McGrail obviously will give you an opportunity to speak as well.
Sure, if I, we've had a couple of different meetings. I think we've made some great progress. I'll let Brian share the current site plan as well as some architectural, conceptual, architectural ideas. And I think it's important that we kind of hear everybody's thoughts tonight. If there's a direction you want or don't want us to go, so that the applicant can then start the process and continue the process with the planning board and CONCOM. As you remember, there are all three boards have to be involved in this process. So with that said, I turn it over to Mr. McGrail, who I think has a couple of slides for us.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Tarbell. Yeah, that is correct. We have been kind of in a holding pattern with the planning board and the Conservation Commission until we can get into agreement on what we're going to finally propose with your board on lot three of the subdivision. And as you had stated, you appointed Mr. Tarbell to be our liaison to work through. I'll call it a redesign back there because during, I think if I can, I'm going to share the original site plan just to refresh everybody's memory. If that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
Because we'll kind of set the table on where we are at this point. So this is the original site plan. Lot three is, is, is the back of the subdivision. You have lot one coming in. You can see the, you can see lot one at the bottom here in the circle, lot two. This is lot three back here, and then lot four is over here. Lot three, which is in the industrial district, that's where we're proposing the thirteen attached dwelling units. And this was a site plan that laid them out. We heard from some of your board members, some of the public, the neighbors, that, you know, they thought there was too much density back here, being too tight with the unit count, too, too thick with the unit count in a request that we look at other designs and the possibility of reducing the number of units. With this, we, as part of our initial submittal package, was also architectural drawings, which I'll refresh your memory where those started. So these were the architectural drawings. These are the, I'll go right to the renderings because that's, that's what kind of matters. And what we heard from your board, from administrative staff in town, and also from the neighbors, that this, the thought was that this wasn't really the appropriate styling for back there. Too top-heavy was a constant term throughout some of the testimony. So we heard that and your board appointed Mr. Tarbell to help us work on those issues, to look at density, possible adjustments, to make it fit the site, what you might deem appropriate, and also to come up with some architectural revisions. So we went, we went to work with Mr. Tarbell. We initially looked at losing, you know, maybe a unit or two to go down to twelve or perhaps ten. We internally did some layouts on that and had some discussions with Chip on that. Mr. Tarbell encouraged us to reduce further and thought that the site would be more appropriate at a lower number. So where we are now is we, we have come up with a design that we'd like to present to you that is reducing the density on this project from thirteen to eight units out back, which is a drastic reduction, as you know. And I'd like to share that site plan with you. My client has shown a, and I think Mr. Tarbell will attest to this through our discussions, working with him has shown a tremendous willingness to, to work with people on this. So this is a layout with eight units out back. And what we were able to do here, and Chip encourages us to, is to kind of, the way these units, one, two, three, and four are, they really provide some character to the lot. They're just not kind of cookie cutter straight. These have to be in the back because we're dealing with a sewer easement that we have to respect. But this really provides some real character to this. And one of the things that we talked to Mr. Tarbell about is there'll be some significant landscaping proposed here to provide a buffer. We're also talking about a beautiful, we can share some pictures of that, of a stone wall with a fence on it, with maybe a gate, like creating a gated community back here that would be opened. But really, working with our landscape architect, providing some landscaping in the areas here. There's really tremendous parking here because we've got two car garages for each of these units, and then two parking spaces for each units and their own driveway. So accommodates four parking spaces for cars. As you know, these are going to be for sale units. So this is really a unique prop, unique product for the town of Wakefield to have townhouses like this. One of these units will be affordable, provide a tremendous affordable opportunity for a family in kind of a free standing structure, which is unique and special.
Yeah, Brian, if I can, the other thing of going from thirteen to eight that having eight back here does is it allowed us to reduce the height. And if you may, kind of squish these units so that they're a little fatter and not as tall. So I just want to commend the applicant for reducing five units out of thirteen. I mean, I can't remember the last time we've had that kind of percentage cut. And I think they are really excited as well about the product they're going to be able to present to the town.
So I'm going to share, we're really at the initial stage of the architectural. But I think our architect has done a really good job capturing of, of the comments by the board, the neighbors, and also the administrative staff on really changing what's proposed and kind of going in a total different direction to fit in with, with the wooded type area back there. There's some wetlands and to really make it fit in to the area. Well, as you can see, quite different from what was proposed initially. So this is, this is not the landscaping plan because that, this is going to be all, this is the cul-de-sac, this will be all backyard here. Back here. What he did is this building actually faces the cul-de-sac. It's going to be significantly screened, but uniquely, even though the front of the building is on the other side, he kind of made it look like a front, which is, which is, which is very nice. But what we're, what they're thinking about, my client was adamant, he wanted very natural colors back here to blend in with the woodwork. Kind of, kind of modeled these after a townhouse project that he saw up at Loom Mountain when he was up there for a weekend skiing that's being built. And that's what he directed his architect. He fell in love with it, and that's kind of what, what this has been modeled after. And this is, this would be the, the four units in the back. So you'll, this is kind of the driveway coming in, if you will, off of the cul-de-sac that you would either, you know, you would pull around and, and, you know, a nice part of this is all the parking is in the back of the units in the back, so really hit back, and I mentioned plenty of parking for, for And so where we stand, you know, our landscape, as, as Chip had mentioned, my client, Nick Leo, who I think is, is on here, is really excited about this. He's, he's, he's vested and and he's talking about everything we can do with the landscape architect. And, you know, there's commitments being made, not only for landscaping on lot three, but for the entire subdivision up by Salem Street. He's had discussions with some of the neighbors and those are ongoing to accommodate some of their requests. And he'll continue to do that in an effort to make folks happy out there. So we're going to have a landscaping plan for the entire project, not just back there, but there'll be some significant landscaping back here as well. I'm going to show you kind of the walls, if I could, and, and this was Mr. Tarbell's idea. My client fully embraced this concept. Let me take me a minute just to find this. Well, in a second, if you could. Sorry about that. Took me a minute to find it.
We got it?
Yep. So this is what we're talking. He's talking about putting a wall like this all the way in on lot three, as you come in on the right side of the driveway with fencing, and then maybe something like this on the, on the cul-de-sac. But that's going to be, that's going to be a final design. It's going to have to be worked out with the landscape architect and will be subject to review. But this, this is just a something that Chip had suggested that my client really liked a lot. And then as far as you know, the gate concept going into that the townhouse or attached dwelling aspect would be something like this. So as you pulled in the driveway, perhaps you would have pillars, and then this would be a gate, but it would be kept open all the time, but it would really create a nice kind of village atmosphere back there, or village look. So that's where we are at this point, Mr. Chair. We can't drop any further. We certainly can't go less than eight. But we, we feel that it's been some significant steps. We appreciate Mr. Tarbell's efforts. I appreciate my client's willingness to work on this, to reduce and be cooperative. And where we stand, we're looking for a direction from the board. If this is a direction that you want us to continue to go, because it will take us to further design, and then we can release our site civil engineer to redesign his drainage for this layout. And I do want to be recognized that we've also heard a lot of testimony from neighbors with concerns for water and drainage. Those are not being ignored. We will have to do a full redesign on drainage that will be reviewed by the town engineer in detail. It will also have to be, go before the planning board and the Conservation Commission as well. So that will certainly get scrutiny, and we, we do respect those concerns. I mean, all the pitches, I think, and plans we showed you maybe look good, but, but it also has to work, and we're committed to making that happen as well. But we need to kind of be released in order to do that work, because as you know, that is not a cheap endeavor for the engineer to design that. And we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and start designing that without knowing that this, this concept that we're now presenting is something that's going in the right direction.
No, understood, and appreciate the comments on the flooding because we, we have heard a lot of public testimony about concerns about adding this impervious surface and what it'll mean for water coming off the site in New Salem Street. So good to hear that, that remains in your crosshairs and focus. So with that, board members, you heard they're, they're looking for direction and some feedback. So I'll throw it open to the board. Dave?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So through you, Brian and Chip, appreciate the, the time spent offline in, since our last meeting, working on this. Comparing to the original design, I really like where this is headed. I like the natural colors. I like the style, the architecture and where it's headed. So, so two thumbs up there. Obviously appreciate the reduction and, and count the number of units. I did notice some additional parking maybe for guests in that back area too. So that's, that's good to see. Hopefully nail that down as well. I like the idea of sort of a wall gate sort of appearance. Maybe something other than the white, but we'll get to that, right? You know, more natural color maybe in material on that fencing and gate material, but but I like the concept as well there too. So appreciate the effort, appreciate the time put into this, and I would, I would say, in my opinion, it's headed in the right direction. I think we should continue to pursue this.
Great, thank you, Dave. Kasumi.
I, I do agree with Dave. It's definitely going into the right directions. Brian, can you show us the site plan again?
Yes.
Um, my only one thing it little concerned me was the how the unit one on the side is very, it looks really close to the proposed driveway on the rendering. It's almost like there's no buffers on because how the, how tall the building is, how tall the building is. Maybe, I don't know if you can shift a little bit on unit one, two, three, and four, and have a little bit more buffer zone between this, the top side of the unit one and the proposed driveway.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I think that this did is had twenty-five foot width, and we had talked about pulling it down a little bit from that as well.
Yeah, this has twenty-four. We might be able to get on the twenty-two on the width.
Reduce the amount of pavement.
Yep.
That was, yeah, that was my only comment, but it, it's definitely getting into the, the right directions, and I really do like how it individually looks all the units are. Thank you.
Thank you. You. Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I love the new design. I just want to piggyback what Kasumi was saying. My only concern is maybe the fire department trying to get down there and maybe think about, I don't know, pivot unit one and two. It just looks like it's turned awkwardly. Like if you pivot one and two towards three, maybe that would open it up more. Almost like the way six, seven, eight, and nine are, well, I'm sorry, five, six, seven, and eight. I'll stack it that way. Maybe one, two, three, and four could be kind of the same. If like one and two turn clockwise, maybe forty degree, whatever it is, certain amount of degrees. It just, just to me, just the way the one and two are turned. I don't know if it's a site limitation, if that's why they did it, or or what, but that was my only concern. I don't know if the fire department's going to say something. I know they can get the fighter truck down there, but trying to make the turn out of there might be a problem.
Yeah, well, we, we will be talking to the chief. But you know, this is, these buildings are going to be sprinkled, and they've only got eight, eight units.
So I get that. I mean, other than that.
And we've got a fire hydrant proposed down at the end here, so you know, we're certainly, we'll certainly talk to him.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think their concern is trying to get in. If they can get in, leaving is not as detriment as getting in. I have, I have no problem seeing them be able to get in. It's just trying to back the truck up out of there might be a situation. But other than that, no, I think everything was good. Looks great. Chip, you did a great job. Look forward to seeing the next steps.
Thanks, Joe. Brian, if you could just make a note to talk to the fire chief, you said you were, it'd be good to hear back on that.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else on the board? Mickey, if you're trying to talk here on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It'll be interesting to see what sort of mitigation of any sort of flooding issues that Site Civil can do. I know there are techniques that not only mitigate, but make, make the the water disposal better than it is right now. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. Those lower two right units, specifically the lower right one, maybe I'm echoing other comments, but if you have an F-150 and you're trying to pull it out, maybe it doesn't have to be an F-150, but it's a big car. Looks like if you're backing up, you're going to hit whatever island that is. So if there's anything you can look at to maybe mitigate that, whether that's an angle, whether that's something, but it seems like that doesn't seem like there's a ton of space there to do what you need to do if you're backing out of that space. Other than that, I want to thank Chip for, I, I know all the work you do on these and I'm very appreciative as a board, and I think it's I think we've really reduced the density here to a extent that's meaningful and not just nibbling at the edges. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Mickey. Yeah, and I would just add, I agree with everything I've heard. I don't really have anything new to add, other than to myself, thank Chip for his work. Thank the applicant for being willing to work with the, the board to address the very specific comments we heard on density and architecture. So I, I think this has taken a really positive turn in my mind. And to remind board members what, what could happen back here, given it's zoning and this is so much better than having an apartment building, which they could do. So pleased to see that's even going in a great direction. So all right. I know we didn't, the new material was presented. If no one has, if members of the board don't have any other further comments, at this point, I would probably turn it over to, open to public comment. Anybody else on the board with a final thought before I do that? Brian, were you going to add anything before I turn it over to the public?
No, Mr. Chair.
If there are members of the public here that would like to testify on this matter, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. I see Scott Hanley with his hand up. If you could, even though you testified before for the, our procedures, if you could give your name and address, that would be appreciated.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Hanley, five, Toby Lane. I am not a director butler, but I live across the street, across Salem Street, and I would like to echo some of the comments of the board members. Thank you, Mr. Tarbell, for working with the developer. This is quite a significant change, in my opinion, to go from thirteen to eight, and the neighbors thanked them, thank the developer for that. I have a few questions and maybe just a couple of comments. Mr. McGrail, will, will the lots, will the units and house on lots one and two, will they mirror, or will they look like the same kind of design that's in the back?
Don't know, don't know on that yet, Scott. But my, he, I do know, and Chip, I think, you know, this was discussed a little bit, and my recollection was I'm, I'm looking for Nick. I don't think he is on. I think he dropped off.
Brian, we, we did talk about this.
Yeah.
And we talked about it being a, a total feel from the, because I had said, you know, we're going to want to know how this all ties together from the front to the back. And to make, to make it, and I, I, if I remember right, Nick was like, yeah, we're going to, we're going to try to keep in the same architectural flavor.
Yeah, that was my recollection too, but we'll, we'll kind of clarify as we go, go forward, Scott.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I would also, if I may, just echo Joe's comments. Lots, I'm sorry, units two and three, one, two, and three there, they look a little funky. It also looks like lot, I'm sorry, units two and three. It almost looks like they have a shared driveway, the way they're laid out, and you know, that that could, that could run into a, an issue. I guess, you know, like they say, fences make good neighbors, but I, I just think something looks a little off with unit two stuck out there. So I just, just echoing Joe's comments here, and my last comment would be, I would rather see the, the proposed driveway change in dimensions than shift those four units towards the, I guess, the east, closer to the Smiths and towards the neighbors there, because I think if you start shifting them to the right and it gets closer to the neighbors, you're just going to get a little more a little more objections from the neighbors, I guess I would say. Just, just some opinions. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once. Twice. So we're gonna close public comment for the hearing. Uh, so, Mr. McGrail, I, I think you have some direction, and, uh, I think people are positive on the direction. You've heard some, uh, comments about, you know, reducing the width of the driveway, maybe some other tweaks that you can take into consideration. Um, and Chip, uh, will still be available to you as a special liaison as you're going through that.
Yeah, I'm gonna release, uh, Site Civil to start on the drainage. So.
People that, people that know me might think I will have an opinion about landscaping.
All right, any, uh, anything else from the board? All right, hearing that, Brian, in terms of timetable, what are we looking at?
Well, I would say, you know, we're, we're definitely not looking at the next meeting, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah. I mean, it could be a while. Um, I've gotta get back, back to the planning board to give them up, an update on what's transpired here. Um, I think that's, uh, coming up at the end of February. Um, and um, we'll cut, we'll probably still be on hold with them, uh, until we can, you know, everybody wants to see the drainage study, so it's really gonna be driven by that. Um, so I would suggest at this point that, um, we would continue this, respectfully request to continue this to the meeting on, I think it's March twelfth a month, and that might not be enough. You know, we're not, the good thing about this is, um, my clients own, my clients own this property. They wanna get this done, but they wanna do it right, um, as you can see. So it's not like um, that, you know, it's some, sometimes when you have somebody has a property under agreement, the property owner is pushing them that they wanna sell, you know, what's taking so long, and so the good thing is that we don't have that. You know, we have, we have time, and, and time works to get a good project and not rush it and make sure it's designed properly, so. Um, I would say March twelfth, but that might not be enough, and if not, we'll let you know, we'll continue it. That's okay with you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and, uh, even if, uh, you continue, you might wanna just give us an update where you are on the twelfth, so we have an understanding what's going on.
That's fine. And, um, these are special permits, so there's no, no need for an extension of time.
All right, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street to our March twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, moving on, other matters. Two hundred to four hundred, Quanapaw Parkway. Discussions of special permit conditions. Mr. McGrail?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, we, uh, as you can see, the, uh, project is uh, progressing well at two hundred, four hundred, Quanapaw Parkway. Um, I was out there with Mr. Pride this week, he's the board's liaison, or review on, uh, mock-up panel and materials, and we'll get into that. Um, and, you know, it's amazing how the construction is proceeding, but, but as you know, this was a rather complex, uh, special permit decision. It had a number of conditions that we have been pecking away at and making great progress. Um, we're coming up to the final ones, um, that we wanted to, um, highlight for you and give you an update in, in, in that regard, um, on these, uh, final conditions. So I'd like to, um, share a copy of the decision, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
So this is the decision, not gonna bore you with the, the findings that you made quite a while ago, but we'll go right to the conditions. And a lot of them are standard, but I've highlighted the relevant ones that, uh, required uh, work. So, uh, you can see the highlights begin at eleven, um, that prior to installation of walkways, pavers, and accessory items such as benches shall be submitted for details. We had the meeting with, uh, Joe Pride on that. Um, this week, he came out, uh, and I think he's fine with that. On behalf of the board, he was designated by you in that regard. And if I can defer to Mr. Pride on that, um, Mr. Chair, just to get that out of the way.
Yep.
Yeah, like Brian said, I met him there yesterday. Um, real quick, I went through the materials. Uh, I mean, I'm not gonna reinvent the wheel, what they had designed, looks great. Uh, they're using all high-end materials. It's not like something you'd find at Home Depot or anything, so. Um, I think they were twelve by twelve pavers, um. The colors look great. Um, the bench material, I said, I have pictures, I took pictures, Brian, I'm just waiting back for that email that you, um, that you had for us, that markup, that picture or something with all the labels on it.
Yep.
You just send that to me whenever you have a chance, but other than that, I mean, everything looks great, you know?
Yeah, and everything was designed as Joe and I saw when we were out there for the site visit by, uh, Copley Wolf Landscape Architects. I mean, the, the, the blend that they have on the, on the pavers is incredible, you know, they're mixing colors and patios and so it's, it's really, really nicely done. So, just wanna let you know, obviously, we didn't forget about that, and Joe came out, so that was number eleven. Uh, twelve dealt with the public amenity area, which you dealt with at your, uh, one of your early meetings, that's all signed off on already. Thirteen is the mock-up panel, which again, has been signed off on, um, at your last meeting and by, uh, Joe Pride. Uh, going down to infrastructure, um, there were a number of financial contributions that had to be made for this project. Um, there was, uh, the, the board, um, uh, might recall, a contribution of up to one point seven five for the reconstruction of Quanapaw Parkway, uh, that has been, uh, done. Um, the, um, six hundred thousand dollars for future, um, mitigation and roadway. That check has been written and delivered to the town, one point three million for lake, I'll call it lake cleanup. Um, to clean up, help clean up the lake or, or prevent, uh, further, um, contamination from going in the lake, one point three million dollars has been paid. And, uh, the I and I has to be paid, uh, prior to certificate of occupancy.
Brian, did you, just to back up, sorry, real quick, I'd have made, you said the Quanapaw Parkway wasn't rebuilt, the contribution was made.
Um, I, 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 I think what they did on that one, uh, Dave, they, my clients are doing the work.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it gave.
I didn't know if it was too early to rebuild that whole parkway.
No, it had, it has been done, but if, if you, and Joe and I saw it, if you go down the Lowell Street side coming in, that road is already up and they're getting ready to do it, right, Joe? Cause I saw you, the, you know, it's not easy.
Bouncing all over the place.
Yeah.
I think they even had it closed for a little while from doing all the work, cause
Yeah.
I was a little, I was a little, um, cause I drive by that, that road a lot, and I know, I don't really wanna bring it up, but I, I, I know that's the entrance they're supposed to be using, and I feel like they've been using the other one. Uh, but I'm assuming it was because they're doing a lot of work there, and they just, you know, they can't have trucks detouring all around it for safety reasons. So I'm assuming that's probably why they closed it. It looks like it's back open again. Um, whether or not they're actually using that entrance instead of the other one, cause I don't, uh, I feel like the other entrance were, wasn't supposed to be used at all. And that's the way it was, that's the way it was in the beginning. And like I said, lately, I've been driving home uh, Lowell Street, and that's been closed for a long time, so I, maybe it's back open again. Um, it was open today, it was open yesterday, obviously, cause we drove down it, but, um.
But is this the road in Lowell and around the site? Refresh your memory. Quanapaw was around the site.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, they were only supposed to use the Lowell Street entrance for all construction vehicles. They weren't supposed to use the North Ave entrance at all. If I remember correctly, I think we, we, we specified that, and now I believe in our own, our conditions. Wasn't it, wasn't that one of them? When we, uh, when we approved this whole project?
Would have been part of the construction management plan that you approved, and I forget, you know, that was all approved. It might have called for allowing certain, um, uh, use of Quanapaw Parkway when the other one was closed for, during construction. But I gotta tell you honestly, my office window looks out at Quanapaw Parkway, I've never seen a truck go by.
Yeah, all right, yeah, I just, I just noticed it closed a lot, and, but then again, I'm not, I mean, I'm coming home before five o'clock at night sometimes, so they might be closing up early, but, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not gonna be a stickler about it, they, they've, I I'm sure if it was a big deal, you'd be getting complaints, the town would be getting complaints, so I, I don't think Gail's been getting any calls. I, I can't speak for her, but um, again, it was open, so, uh, they were probably bringing utilities in. I'm sure ninety-nine percent of the utilities is coming from Lowell Street, so. Um.
No, that's fine, I just wanna clarify, cause the other paragraph said contributions to the town, that one said doing the work not to exceed a certain amount, so. I was just looking for clarification, not where they were delivering stuff, Joe, just, I'm not gonna go there. I wasn't trying to go there, but just whether it was done or they made a contribution for it to be done.
They're doing it.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
So, Brian, at this point too, I'll, I'll, I'll remind, I'll let board members know that, um, you know, we've been work, uh, there was a meeting Monday with Tom Mullen, so Tom Mullen's been involved in overseeing all this with us and helping making sure that all these, um, conditions are being met and that, uh, they're being, um, you know, and, and he's supporting us, so uh, we're not just, as we go through these fairly quickly, I think folks should know that, uh, we are kind of all over this.
Right, and, and those contributions have to be done a certain way, and those, yeah, he'd be involved in that.
Yeah, yeah. The financial ones, Dave, the checks have already been delivered.
Yeah. Yeah, great.
So. Uh, but, but these are the big ones now that we're working on, so I just kinda wanna give a recap on what we just did. Um, but these are the ones that, as the chair mentioned, that Tom Mullen is involved in intensely, so. A is, is we have to provide the town an, an instrument, uh, satisfactory to town council for a reason, restricting these are the open space areas, a total of approximately twelve point seven acres, plus or minus, um, for conservation purposes in perpetuity. So, there's, there's a restrictive covenant, which I sent you a copy of, that will bind those areas into that restriction, um, which you have. That, um, is one of the items, as the chair said, we had a meeting with our corporate council, Tom Mullen, Chair Lucy, and Town Administrator Mayo on Monday, and we Tom Mullen is reviewing all of these. He had a number of changes that he wanted that we're now implementing. And then the, the second one is to construct and maintain the, uh, recreational pathway and footbridges on the Lake Path area. And to have a agreement in place to allow public access to that area. So that's another document that's being reviewed by Tom. Um, the next is to maintain a portion of the town-owned land immediately adjacent to the Lake Path area. Um, and, uh, showing us a path maintenance area and land preservation area. If you recall, our our O and M requires that we not only maintain, uh, our property, but, and I say our property, my client's property, and also the town property along the lake. Um, because our, my, uh, client is gonna have landscapers out there doing their property, so they said at the same time, let us, um, maintain the public park, uh, and cut the lawn at the same time, so it all looks unique because the public is gonna have access to both of these areas. So, so that is, that is in your O and M plan, that requirement is in the O and M plan, uh, that was sent to you. And that might be something that board members wanna read in detail a little bit, because that kinda highlights the requirements to maintain our property and also the town property. Um, make available the public amenity area, which we went over, um, so that's part of it, for the public to have, uh, access to the uh, public restrooms that are gonna be in there, and also the public space within the project building itself. Wi-Fi service, you know, that is gonna be in the Lake Path area, as you recall, that's a requirement. The public safety, one of the documents that we provided that's, has been reviewed by town council is a lease for the, uh, town of Wakefield, for the police department, for the public safety office that's being provided to them. So town council has reviewed that, and he's commenting on it. And then the final is the, uh, commuter rail. Um, um, you know, the transportation, which as you may recall, at the last time we dealt with this project, that Erin Kikinda asked you to push that off because she's working on a global program, so you defer that. Um, that that does not have to be done before the first occupancy, uh, permit at this point. Um, so, so what we really have is, we, we have the restriction on the land for, to keep it open space, a portion of the property, four point seven acres. We have a document that provides public access. We have the lease for the public safety, all under review by town council um, in conjunction with Chair Lucy and Town Administrator Mayo. Uh, and then we have the O and M plan, which is kind of, you know, that doesn't have to be approved by town council cause that's more functional operation of the property, which I think your board will, um, look at. Where we stand with timing on this, um, the restriction, the access, I'll call it the easement for the town, public access in the lease, need to go to town meeting to be approved. And we're looking to do that at the Springtown meeting. Um, so what we talked about in our meeting with town council, um, since these are conditions of your board's special permit for this project, um, we, we are respectfully requesting that your board be the sponsor of that article at town meeting, which you're entitled to be under the charter. Because you're the one that, um, negotiated these amenities for the town and put them as conditions. Um, and now we would like you to, um, to, uh, take it to town meeting, um, to get them approved. And basically, what it will be, it will be an approval from town meeting to authorize the town council to accept these, because that, that's, that's kind of the legal process, but you're the ones that would kick it off, um, with the, um, with the Warren article. And we discussed that with Tom and Chair Lucy, and Tom Mullen thought that would be appropriate. Um, and he said he would actually draft the Warren article for your, uh, your board to sponsor. Um, Mr. Chair, like, kinda capture everything that we had discussed? Am, am I missing anything, or?
I think, uh, I think that captures it, you know, wanna thank, uh, Tom Mullen for all his support on this, and you know, obviously Steve May was there to, to, uh, weigh in as well, so I feel like we're well supported by the town. Um, and if this goes to, um, as we think it should, I agree that I, I think the board should sponsor the, the, the article at town, um, meeting that you know, Mr. Mullen will write that up for, so we don't have to go through that exercises aboard. Comments or questions on that?
No, just appreciate, appreciate, yeah, following through, Brian, and giving us these updates. Um, again, I remember that decision well. Lot, lot went into it, and a lot of, uh, agreement on, on all parties, and, uh, appreciate the updates. Uh, look forward to getting those, those few through, and hopefully they'll be written in such a way, Tom, that, um, you know, highlights the benefits of the town for all of this, right? So we don't get into two hours of, what's this all about, and, you know, so hopefully people get the gist that this is all a benefit for the town, the lake, right, the whole area, so, um, hopefully it's written in such a way that that, that message is conveyed. Um, and that the article, you know, article or articles, I don't know if it'll be one or more, um, you know, go through with a lot of.
Now, we're, we're, we're gonna do a one article, cause you can't have different votes on different pieces of this. We need to wrap them up into one thing.
Yeah. Okay, nope, but appreciate it, appreciate it.
I mean, you know, your board did a great job on this decision, and, and there is a lot of benefit to the town. I mean, I don't think people are gonna vote against having, um, open space on the lake that they can use in public restrooms that are gonna be maintained and cleaned by my client. I, I think that will be what we sees, right?
And the value of them taking care of, you know, I, I encourage board members, I'm sure you did, but we still have time, read the O and M plan versus the conditions. And them taking care of the invasive species along the lake there, and the, the, the value of taking care of that public land as well uh, is enormous, so, um, Dave and company, I think you, you know, board did do a good job with that, and under your leadership, Dave, so, um, it is a good project, it's looking good, and I think we got some good, uh, benefits for, for the town for it. We good board to move on, or, but again, I would just encourage you in your free time, take a look at the O and M. I, I did, it, it's pretty, we we're pretty good at it, and, uh, it's pretty tight, but just, let's make sure nothing at all falls through the cracks.
Yeah, and there's time, there's time on the O and M, Dave, um, Mr. Chair, because that, that doesn't have to be a town, that's not a town meeting item, item. And, and I expect we'll be back at your meeting on the twenty-sixth with a draft article from Tom Mullen, uh, that will be accepted by your board to, to forward to the deadline to submit the, uh, Warren article to the town council to get it off at the Springtown meeting is March twelfth, so it has to be addressed at your next meeting.
A- addressing it, does that mean we have to vote to?
Yeah.
Put it forward?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just would never have this. I just would never have this process before, so.
Yeah, the O N M coming later. Usually it's approved as part of the decisions, yeah.
Yep, so you got some time. I mean, the O N M is pretty good, but you got time to look at that.
No, but the, but Brian, you need the O N M before you look for occupancy at the first building, the first.
I think so, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Chip.
Start leasing, you know, before they start leasing, so.
Yeah, I mean, the O N M is done.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at the O N M, I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, so I wouldn't. Delay. Getting that into action just so it's in place so that you're not. Worrying about when you can lease units and stuff like that.
Yeah, we'd like you to approve it when you're ready.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Anything else, board members?
Brian, any? Probably can't say anything, but any leads or? For the restaurant in that space?
I, 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 I think Haley is on Haley. Do you have any information for the board on that? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, we don't have any material update right now, but once we do, we will be sure to. To let everyone know.
Good. Great.
Yeah, we, we are, we were, we're, we have a broker, we're doing tours, we're just trying to find the right tenant. So it's still in process, but trying to make it meaningful.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. For you, Mr. Chair, if I may, Haley, do you have anything to add? Or you, are you good with everything?
I think we're good with everything. I just want to clarify that. We, we as C C N F and E Q R are a hundred percent ready to have all documents approved, including the O N M. So if everyone's, um, in agreement with where it's at, I think. I agree with, uh, the board that it, it needs to get pushed through as a whole package. And that would be our preference as well. We want to make sure that. You know, everything that was agreed upon during the special permit in the con con process can be addressed all at once with that one town meeting.
So I think we should be in a position to do that, the twenty sixth. Does that make sense, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, it does. So again, just remind board members to be ready for the twenty sixth.
Is that okay, Haley?
That's fine with me.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, for the O N M, right, town meetings, May, so, yeah, yeah.
But as Haley is saying, it's important for them to have everything, you know, that we submitted, signed off on the, on the twenty sixth, that's all.
Yeah, because we're going to have to approve the town meeting, uh, Warren article, Dave, and then we might as well do the O N M too, unless somebody finds something between now and then.
So do we have to draft it and run it through the planning board to all the Warren articles? Or do we just? Draft it and? With town council and, and it gets added?
Yeah, this is not a planning board event. They do not, it's not a zone change. So there's no public hearing. It's, it's just a. Warren article that, um, that actually has to be put on by the town council because you're sponsoring it. So on the, our charter, you have a right to do that. You can put whatever you want on town meeting. So you're going to put this on town meeting and. Um, and then you will speak towards it at town meeting of why, and obviously Tom Mullen will be there to answer questions and clarify. And the Warren article will actually, I believe, authorize the town council to accept the restriction, the lease. And the easement. Um, and then, you know, they will finalize the, the final terms of that and it will be accepted. Assuming they do, I, I wouldn't know why they wouldn't.
Sounds good.
Anything else, board members? Okay, let's, uh, move on to the next item. Next item under other matters is four oh eight Main Street. It's a pre-app meeting pursuant to section one ninety forty five E of the zoning bylaw. Is this yours, Mr. McGrell?
It is, Mr. Chair, I think I could be. Rather quick on this. Um, this is a pre-application of requesting. Um, a waiver from the site plan requirements. Uh, because this is a property that is in the middle of downtown. Um, so there's not a lot of, uh, benefit to having my client have to hire a surveyor to. To do a, um. Plan of a lot that is basically a building. Uh, I'll show you the property. It's four oh eight, so that's the, the three units here. So it's going to be this unit to the left, right next to Brothers. And it's going to be a special permit application for fast food. He, he wants to do some type of food service here. Um, that will come before your board and probably parking relief, which is typical downtown. Um, but we didn't see, we didn't see a real benefit to hiring a surveyor to do a lot with a building on it.
Those are actually set potentially separate units in there, Brian?
They are separate.
When they redid the inside, they definitely did it.
Four oh eight, four ten and four twelve, where Trump is.
All right, but four oh eight and four ten are, could be two separate tenants.
Correct. And they're going to be.
You don't want both?
No.
Okay, it's been a gaping tooth in downtown, as we all know, so.
It's.
Be great to fill both.
And Brian, I'm, I'm fine with, uh. I'm fine with, uh. No site plan, but remember there is an electrical issue on all of this, so we will be looking. Or I would be still wanting to know how you're going to deal with all that.
The, uh, utility ship?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, Brian, what would have been the parking requirement for that, uh, for that?
I haven't calculated yet, um. Mr. Philly, but we will, because I believe there'll be a request for relief for that. So you'll know once I get that square footage for the building. But it's one per two hundred and fifty square feet, whatever that built, whatever that unit is. Um, but remember, if it's under a thousand, it's exempt. So I don't, I don't know. You know, we've, we have to get an interior plan done. We're, we're kind of at the preliminary stage.
But it's not, it doesn't look like it's much more than a thousand, uh.
I doubt it, yeah.
So it'd be a permit, potentially a variance if parking was needed, right?
Special permit, yep.
Okay, but no site plan review? That makes sense to me as well. Given this location in the building, yep.
That's been our practice on these where there's really, the building is the site, so. I have no issues here either. Anybody else?
Nope.
Looking for a motion then?
That'd be great.
Mr. Chair, move that we waive, uh, site plan approval. For the proposed, um. Use and redevelopment or development and use at four oh eight Main Street. Is that all you need, Brian? Just waiving site plan approval?
Site plan review, I believe.
Yeah, so, well, you basically requirement for a detailed site plan.
Okay.
Um. Uh, because just to. Just to make sure we get it right, let me refresh my own memory on it, um.
We usually expect the permit is part of the paragraph of the bylaw.
I don't think you, I don't think you're, I don't think you're waiving site plan review, but I think you're waiving the requirement for. The site plan, but let's just take a look at it to make sure that we don't.
Okay.
Make a mistake, hang on a second.
Let's waive the right thing.
We, yeah.
We do these once in a while.
Okay. Okay, can you share my screen, show you the language? It is E. The applicant may present his application for a special permit with a special agreement authority, meet with the special permit grant authority or describe the project, special agreement. Permitting granting authority may waive or modify the requirements for a detailed site plan. As described above, so it asks that you, you, you waive the requirements to provide a detailed site plan, none is required.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to say, uh, that I move that we. Uh, waive the requirement for a detailed site plan for the proposed development and use at four oh eight Main Street.
Second, the amended motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing seeing non-regulable voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, next up, sixty two and seventy six Foundry Street. Review of proposed signage.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the, um. Uh, the multifamily that's under construction by, uh, the Devi Assi Company on. Foundry Street and in your, uh, decision, as you normally do, you waive, you, you, I should say you. Um, reserve your right to approve signage for the building and we'd like to present that to you. And hopefully, uh, get your approval. So we submitted, I submitted to you a sign package on this, pretty basic signage, what they're looking for here. So the first is, um, they are looking for signage in the, uh. This is sign number two over here and then looking for sign number three in the back. And sign number two up front also. So, uh, and those signs are right here. Sign number two just is at both entrances to tell people this is parking only for the residences. Of Renly, it's called, uh, the Renly. And, um, and then our back is, we have designated parkings associated with the commercial space. Uh, in the building, so those are going to be designated commercial parking, not to tenants. So we're, we're designating those for, uh, commercial. So it's just basic signage. Uh, and then, um, they're proposing sign number one on the front of the building. Which was, was, was shown. To a certain extent during the permitting, but pretty simple. These are just individual letter signs that they want on the entrance, entrance, Renly residences. Uh, they're black, but they're backlit, um, and they light up white at night. And then the, the, you can see the sixty two in here. Down below. That is halo illuminated. For the number for the fire department. And, you know, as you know, there's a restaurant that has been permitted here. So they're, they're holding off on any signage on that. They're, they're, you know, they're going through, uh, um. Process of marketing, et cetera.
Brian, does Renly have a, um, a meaning?
You know, I don't know about that. That's interesting, Mike.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to pick at it. I'm, I, I was looking, I was just interested, sorry.
I'm kind of ashamed that I've never asked. I should know the answer to that, but I don't. But I think, you know, the building's coming along really nice. I think you saw it, um, it's being marketed. Um, sales are going well. This is a condominium. Uh, for sale, which is kind of nice, um. Because we've had some rentals, so this is a for sale building. Um, and, uh, you've probably seen in the paper that the affordable units are, are, are out for mark, out for bid also, or out for lottery. They've been advertised in the Wakefield item. So things are proceeding well. So we're, we're respectfully looking for a vote to approve this signage, so I could do a letter for you, Mr. Chair, to the building department.
All right. Any comments or questions on the, the signage? Other than Mickey, I was with you. I just, I don't think Elmer Fudd's going to move in here because of the, you know, conciliation here.
Do you know what the one of the top of the lake is called?
I'm going to find out.
I don't know where that name came from, Brian, do you? But anyway, someone comes up with these names.
Uh, I, I think the, I think the, uh, signage is great. Back to signage. It's fine.
Just trying to get a date on the sign plan, Brian.
Oh, sorry.
The sheets have different. Um, this is one twenty one. So each sheet has a different date on it, which makes.
This is twelve thirty, we can reference it.
But how about as presented?
Yeah, just. Yep, as presented, but, okay. Usually there's a date and we can put it on it.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so Mr. Chair, move that we, uh, approve the sign plan, um, as presented this evening from Expose Signs and Graphics. Um, for the property at sixty two to seventy six Foundry Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regulable voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Signs are approved. Next up on the other matters is our town planner. Um, I see Samantha Elliott on the screen. Welcome Samantha, your first, uh. They get your first foray into one of our meetings, so welcome.
Yeah.
We're here to talk about, uh, draft A, uh, A D U zoning amendments.
Yeah, so I have a short presentation, um, to help with some of the specifics, um. I can pop that up.
Samantha, you're back on mute?
Sorry about that. It's right next to the start slideshow button. Um, so this is the proposed A D U bylaw. Uh, it's intended to be going forward for spring twenty twenty five town meeting, um, in May. And I'm just going to go over what the proposed bylaws, there were some things that were brought up at planning board last night. So there will be some minor changes to what's, uh, noted here, but the basics of it will stay the same. Um, because the state keeps changing the regulations. Um, I have, I think, three or four, four different iterations, um, now, so. All right, so what is an A D U? It's, uh, short for an accessory dwelling unit. It was approved, um, by state law through the Affordable Homes Act and is technically permitted by right. Throughout the state as of February second, twenty twenty five. So somebody could go in and build an A D U that meets the state regulations. Um, as spelled out in the Massachusetts, um, general law and. Not have any of the existing additional stipulations, um, that we are talking about inside. The proposed A D U bylaw or under our current accessory apartment. Bylaw, so in, in A D U, just so you know, is a, um, I'll read the definitions, at least the big points of it. Is a self-contained housing unit, so it'll have, um, sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities. On the same lot as the principal dwelling. Um, part of the reason why that's spelled out is so it's differentiated from, um, lodging houses, uh. And, and boarding houses and, and whatnot. Um, it's subject. To, uh, applicable dimensional and parking requirements, has to maintain a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through a shared entry corridor. It is not larger than, uh, in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine, nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Um, and is subject to. Such additional restrictions that may be imposed by municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions. Um, and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental. But nothing can be what's considered unreasonable, um. Uh, that especially one that is not can, uh, I'm sorry, that is not a short-term rental. So, uh, right now, just so you know where we are on the timeline, presenting a overview to your board tonight. Um, the planning board has a, their second public information session. It will be a hybrid located at public safety building on March eleventh. Um, with the goal to have it be voted on and reviewed by the town for spring town meeting so that we don't have a donut hole. Um, where our accessory apartment regulations are no longer in effect, which is where we are right now. Um, this middle situation where the ADUs are allowed. Only meeting, um, the state regulations and of course underlying zoning setbacks and whatnot. Um, and so we're hoping to be able to get to that other side where the town is able to, um. Kind of have a little bit more oversight on some of the components that we are permitted to by the state regulations. So the, the idea is to replace the accessory apartment, um, with the accessory dwelling unit. So the size limitation, under the proposed zoning bylaw, it's, um, nine hundred square feet or I. Should have spelled it out, uh, better on here, but or nine, or half of the gross floor area, whichever is less. Um, and that's what's permitted by right. We're allowed to be more lenient, meaning making things bigger. Um, or have additional allotments, um, through the special permit process. It's spelled out by the state, so, um, we're offering, there's zero, I've got to take out on this, sorry, um, twelve hundred square feet. So one thousand two hundred, not twelve thousand, um, I have one to any serious there by this, going through the special permit process, which would come back. And be reviewed, um, by your board. There's only one permitted per principal dwelling, um, so there's only one permitted per lot. Uh, there is. The state gives the ability to have an additional A D U through the special permit process. the state gives the ability to have an additional ADU through the special permit process, but um, right now after meetings with the town departments and um, the planning board, the conversation is no, there's only one allowed per lot. Um, it will be allowed or it is now allowed by right in any single-family zoning district. So that's single-family, whether it's allowed by right or by some sort of um, conditional zoning review. So that's uh, special, single residence, single residence, general residence, mixed residence, and neighborhood business. Um, and the setbacks, I need to go back and read through um, because again, iterations have changed from the state. And I believe right now what we're looking at is ten feet from the side and rear, whether it's attached or detached. Um, or the underlying zoning, whichever is less. Uh, and that's been what we've talked about. I, again, will be going back and reviewing that. To make sure it, it's reflecting what's on the state. Uh, the parking requirements, this is mandated by the state, so we don't have much say over this. Um, if you're half a mile from transit, there's zero parking requirement. If you're more than half a mile from transit, then it's one parking space and it can be no more. Um, transit here is, it with, is defined within the state regulations for this protected use ADU as a bus stop, uh, subway station, or commuter rail station. Um, they note the bus is where, any place where you embark uh, or disembark from a bus. Um, so we just wanted to make sure it's spelled out so everybody is clear. It's whether you're near a commuter rail station or a bus stop, since we don't have any subways and I doubt we will in Wakefield. Um, site planners review, review is required with um, any proposed ADU that has parking. Um, and will be coming to your board for review. And special permit would only be required if it's in a floodplain or aquifer protection overlay district. We don't have any of those right now. It's just what's spelled out in the state. Um, and I may be shifting that language around a little bit. But that's the only time that a site plan, or I'm sorry, a special permit can be required. Um, again, or if you're increasing size. And so the goal of ADUs on the state level was to increase year-round housing. That's why, part of why they gave everybody the ability to regulate short-term rental. That means a unit that is uh, something that somebody could live in year-round versus the short-term thirty days or, or less. Um, and having that quick turnover, which takes it out of the year-round housing market. Um, and actually kind of it increases our dwelling units, but also decreases what's actually available for people. So the state gave the municipalities the ability to prohibit short-term rentals and ADUs, um, and that's currently what we're proposing. Um, to explicitly prohibit them in ADUs and to have it as a stipulation for obtaining a certificate of occupancy. And right now, if somebody builds an ADU, technically um, there is no prohibition on utilizing them for short-term rentals. Um, so those are kind of the really big, basic uh, overviews. You have any questions? I'm happy to, to answer them.
Members of the board, I have my own, but I will defer to the board first.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I think you referenced that you, this would replace our current uh, bylaw, but there's many that we have that won't meet your requirements that we've done over the last twenty years. What's gonna happen to those? Those that, you know, I think there's a place to have both stay in. Because I don't know how you do it and eliminate what's been done in the past. Do you have an answer to that?
Chip, I agree, because I had a note on that too, because I know we've had waivers of ones of also more than nine hundred square feet and more than the twenty-five percent that was allowed in our bylaw. So there would be people out there, we got it's just more of a question for you Samantha, that I, I see in two C. You know, you, you, you're trying to grandfather them. I just think we need something. We built suspenders there. Uh, I don't think.
Yeah, I, just to, to, that I, you don't have to belabor that. Um, Mr. McGrail um, had brought it up at planning board last night. It's one of the components that needs to get reworded slightly. Um, the way that the state regulations are is that effectively it's replacing. Um, so somebody can't, you can no longer enforce the regulations or conditions that um, were applied to existing accessory apartments going forward. So they can no longer be relative only and they can no longer require owner occupancy. It's what's explicit in the state regulations. However, um, both of you, it absolutely need to find a different way to make it a little bit more um, explicit that whatever conditions were granted as a special permit um, are permitted to continue without additional waivers or renewals or anything like that. Um, it's just that the stipulations that are um, in conflict with now the ADU bylaw, which is the um, owner occupancy, the annual check-ins or renewals, you can't do that anymore. Um, and the relative relation familial clause components. You can't do those anymore. So it has to be adjusted slightly, but um, yes, I, I will be working on getting some updated language and everybody will be getting a copy of that um, as soon as I have that done. I was working on it um, today and also talking to Mr. McGrail about it. Um, because that was a concern he had brought up for some of the, his, his past clients.
Hi, uh, Samantha, those were um, granted their zoning based upon those requirements at the time. Is this like an ex post facto law, basically going back in time and changing all of our um, uh, Wakefield zoning to allow uh, to just negate what we went through for the last five, ten, fifteen years?
The way that the state regulations are outlined. Um.
I mean, uh, they, the state regulations are outlined, but they don't, do they bypass everything we've done? In um, going back in time?
Just those, yes, they're, they're, it's being applied retroactively to existing accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments. Um, but for those specific clauses. So for the owner occupancy, the familiar familial relation, whatever you want to call it. Um, and then the, the renewal, you can't have this renewal process um, for verifying this.
Is it the renewal process where it stops, or are they negating any decision that was made in the last decade?
They're not gonna negate other components of the decision. So like if, like you were, um, Mr. Lucy was talking about with the square footage being over nine hundred square feet, and now they're like a legal non-conforming situation, that would not apply. And again, this is part of why um, that clause in the proposed bylaw needs to be updated. And I'll be working on that um, the rest of this week and into next week. Uh, but it would the conditions that are in co, direct conflict with what they call, I think it's unreasonable. Um, I want to get the right, right language, hold on. Yes, they call it unreasonable regulation, which is the relationship and owner occupancy components. Those are no longer enforceable.
But that's usually going forward. Going back in time.
I hear you, it's, it's, it's right, and, and it's right in the regulations. You're more than welcome to read it. I'm more than happy to send a copy of them uh, from the internet. Um, as part of this, but yes, that's, it's what it explicitly states.
Going back in time.
They're no longer enforceable, is what it states.
Okay, thank you.
But Kusumi, you had your hand up, and then Dave.
Um, I had a quick questions. I, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something, but on the setbacks, you have the side and rear, but there's no front setback?
It would, um, this, the front setback is going to defer to the underlying zoning.
Okay.
It's the side and the rear that are um, most impacted uh, thinking more primarily on an interior lot, not on a corner lot. Because corner lots, when you reduce that setback, it can cause some um, site issues and safety issues uh, if you were to pull it up. So the proposal um, when talking with department heads was to have it apply for side and rear setbacks only, and then defer to standard underlying zoning for your front setback.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So Samantha, uh, just some sort of general question, just from my, my understanding, maybe for the other board members. So when, when was this drafted? Our, our attempt to, to codify this with the zoning, local zoning, based on what the state passed. When did we draft this?
Uh, it's dated on the top, the version.
No, but like January? I think I got a copy that said January. Was it drafted actually that recently?
Yes.
Okay.
I had been working on the outline and researching and waiting. Part of the reason why it was pulled back is because the state didn't actually release the final regulations until February second. Um, so I was working off of the draft and it kept getting updated, which is why everybody kept getting copies. Um, and I also was meeting with other department heads, fire and safety, um, uh, trying to work out some addressing details, uh, title five. I mean, there are a lot of different moving pieces, so um, that was the earliest it was available.
Okay, no, just trying to understand, because again, it was passed in August, but now we're seeing it in February, right?
Yeah, because the state.
Board and we're the board that, so it just seems like I don't know, it would have been nice to see it sooner, like we're, you know, like maybe before it went to planning and actually has public hearing on it. Um, that's all. I was just trying to understand the timeline and how we kind of got to here, but.
Sure.
Um, okay, so, and my next question was where are we with the planning board? You kind of already answered that. Um, so if I'm understanding correctly, um, the only time that an applicant um, or someone would need to come back to the ZBA in the future is if they want to increase the size um, above nine hundred, right, up to twelve hundred, or they need a parking space?
Yes, or they're in a floodplain.
Or in the floodplain. I don't know that we have an aquifer district, do we?
We don't, we don't. It's just that I copied and pasted the language from the state because I was tired of, I'm sorry, I was really tired of editing it. They were like, there was literally um, that week of January, there was a ver, a version every single day. Because they just kept releasing updated versions of the regulations.
I'm just trying to understand when they would actually need to come to us at this point, right? It, it isn't entirely by right, because there are situations where they would still need to come to us. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, and again, for everyone's benefit too, make sure we're all on the same page. So.
Yes, well, and, and too, if they are coming looking for additional zoning relief, like if they're looking for a reduction in setbacks based further than what's being offered here, they still have the ability to do that. It's just, that's not what is allowed by right, if that makes sense.
Okay, so, right, because I think I read in the drafts, you know, depending on the size of the lot, maybe going down to five feet, your presentation just showed ten.
Right.
None of those zones go less than ten, and I would be very concerned with anyone building anything closer than ten feet, what our setbacks currently allowed, even in the general residence. So um, anyway, I just, are we th, thinking it's gonna be no less than ten on the side?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so the, the version that I got that was supposed to be the final draft was actually not the final draft. So the version that, again, this is, I, I was, I'm at the mercy of the state regulations, because again, they were not released um, a final version until February second, which was effectively when they're supposed to be in um, in, I mean, it's, it's in effect. So um, the differentiation between lot size is um, apparently not allowed. So they changed the regulations from the final version I had that said will not change to the final version that's actually on the website. Um, so that will be changed to ten feet. Um, and I, I have to look back at it because I believe it was in, in my original version notes, um, for the detached structures and then an, an attached would be subject to whatever the existing conditions are. Um, so uh, uh, unfortunately, I'm sorry that there isn't an updated version. Some of it had changed from planning board's conversation last night and the newest version that the state had released. Um, Mr. McGrail had brought up some concerns again um, at planning board. And so I didn't want to send you all an updated version this morning. Um, well, not this, this morning early, but before this meeting, I wanted to have you um, at least working off of the same copy.
So what you're saying is in three F and G where they reference ten thousand square feet, that's gonna be addressed?
Yes, it has to be changed because it um, that's not, they, they changed the state. They changed the regulations' final version, even though the final version I had was not supposed to change. They changed it. Um, and so there's no it, it used to be explicitly spelled out that there was a five thousand or um, a five-foot setback for lots under ten thousand square feet. And that was not coming from us, that was coming from the state. And so I just had mine, our version reflecting that. And what I did um, or what the state did is they updated it. Uh, I don't know how you update a final version that many times, but you, they re-released the final version, again, that had different numbers on it. Um, and Mr. McGrail had brought it up and all, it brought up a number of concerns again at planning board last night. Um, and I know, I have that version in my office if everybody, if anyone wants to see it, but the, of the state regulations. So that part has to be changed. Um, we don't have to do the five-foot setback. We all had concerns about it, but our hands were tied because it was what the state was saying. The ten-foot setback was what we had talked about, we, meaning um, when I had met with the department heads to start talking about some of this. To try to at least get uh, some components of it uh, ahead of the, the ball whenever the state.
So who's, who's setting the setbacks, the state or the town?
The town. Um, there are some restrictions that the state has based off of existing structures, and you cannot be more restrictive than you would be for a single-family structure.
But why are we changing the setbacks? Why don't we get all the setbacks the same?
So it has to be something that can be in every single parcel that has a single-family zoning district option, would it, however the, you want to, I have to look at the exact language from the state. Um, the, what is it, the, the single-family zoning district. Okay, so every single one of those has to have an option to be able to have an ADU by right, whether it's attached or detached. So when I met with the um, department heads and was having conversations about this, because I have actually written zoning code for um, garage apartments and accessory dwelling units before, in, in previous positions. Um, so this is not entirely foreign to me. They had done five foot, which come to find out is not quite the best when there's a fence involved. So I explicitly said, coming out of the gate, five foot is too, too small. The regular zoning code um, in many other municipalities around the area allows for a reduced setback. Ours does as well for accessory structures. It is not a same, it's not the same set book, uh, setback as your primary structure. So in going off of that and discussing about this, um, the accessory structure, when it's detached, there was some effort to reduce it slightly, but not have it be dropped all the way down to five feet, which other.
The accessory structure that's allowed is not a dwelling unit. We're not putting people in there sleeping, eating, and drinking and cooking. And I, I'm totally against a ten-foot setback. I don't know why we need any different setbacks than we currently have in all our zoning districts. And you can, they can, you can fit it. You can fit it. You can, you can't show me a lot that you can't attach or detach and not meet the current setbacks and still have a dwelling unit. I think ten feet is, I don't know who came up with ten feet, but I think that's crazily too small. I mean, we're not talking about an accessory building. We're talking about a dwelling unit. So it's a very different circumstance to put within ten feet of a lot line, either front, either side or back. And if you're okay with keeping the front the same, why not keep the side and back the same?
Samantha, are you saying that from the state, the ten feet now, not the five feet?
No, I, I would like to understand. So that sounds a little bit arbitrary. Could you help me understand why you're saying that you can't have a, a garage is different than a dwelling unit if there's still um, fire and safety accessibility? Ten feet is way, even five feet technically is enough for accessibility um, around. Help me understand how that's, because it just comes off a little bit arbitrary.
I don't think it's arbitrary at all, and I think I don't, I don't think you're correct in saying it's arbitrary. If I'm sleeping there, if I'm eating there, if I'm making food there, I'm looking out the windows there on neighbors. I don't think, I think it's fine to have a garage within ten feet or a shed or one of our other accessory dwelling, uh, accessory units that's not dwelling. I just, I don't think it's arbitrary when you're putting somebody living there that's now gonna live ten feet from a lot line.
I mean, there are existing structures in Wakefield. There are historic structures and plenty of them outside of Wakefield as well that have less than ten-foot side setbacks.
I believe they're called non-conforming. I'm not looking to be argumentative.
Historic.
I'm, I'm not looking to be argumentative. I'm, I'm not looking to be argumentative. I'm giving you. Well, you are, you are, you are argumentative. You obviously think the way you've done it is right. And I'm.
No, I'm just trying to understand how reflecting the, so let me back up. Um, if you've ever read the book Strong Town, uh, from Strong Towns, The Escaping the Housing Trap. It talks a little bit about how existing zoning code does not reflect realistic conditions for, um, historic structures in the development, especially in the New England area. If you look at Somerville, which I know you're not Somerville, but the example in the book is Somerville. There's, I think it's like twenty structures in the entire city that meet existing setbacks under actual zoning code. And so part of the effort in this and part of what the state was talking about when they put out the iteration with less than ten thousand square foot lots was to be able to allow every single parcel to be able to build an A D U. I, I would venture to guess that there are existing parcels where they do not have the, um, in, in general residents, um, in the more historic kind of smaller working class neighborhoods around downtown in Wakefield, where they're not going to have the required rear setback to meet what you're talking about. Um, and I mean, maybe they do. Maybe I'm wrong. That's fair. I've been driving around and literally walking around since I started, trying to get an, an understanding of the area. I'm just, I'm sorry if I come across argumentative. I'm not. I am trying to understand the difference that you see between a accessory structure and a dwelling, when the existing conditions are already less than what you're asking for in current zoning.
But you're talking about very specific areas. I'm talking about Wakefield as a whole. So possible, possibly if you're looking at downtown two family on Albion Street, that's very different than looking out on one of the neighborhoods that have acre lots or new developments.
Sure, like S S R?
Yeah, so given that, I don't know, I'm just saying ten feet to me is really tight. I mean, when we look at, when we look at a variance and somebody's looking to vary the setbacks to greater than or to, to less than what we currently allow, we look at where do the windows look out? How close is the next structure to it? A lot of variables go into whether we even contemplate a variance. We often don't. We often say re- redo your design. You don't need to come that close to your neighbor's lot line. So I'm just trying to figure out why we're now to, now we're, now the state is telling us that we have to allow, which I'm, don't even, I don't even agree with this, but the state's now telling us we have to allow these by right. And we're then willing to go and say, okay, not only is the state telling us that we have to do it by right, but we're going to shrink the setback requirements that we currently have, that we normally wouldn't even let a variance happen within to allow them to have people living now closer. So that's, that's why I'm saying it's different. I just don't see the need to vary our, our, our side yard and backyard setbacks based on, they can always, like you said, they can always do it through a variance, or they can do it in other ways. I don't think we should do it by right. That's my opinion.
But Chip, with my understanding, just if I, if I can, just piggyback on, because we have a zoning table and it lists the different zones, right? And general residence is ten, right? Single twenty. We know what the setbacks are, depending on the zone. Are you suggesting that this bylaw, uh, you know, uh, amendment should just refer to the zoning table and say, if you're going to do it, you should meet the current underlying zoning, which seems reasonable, Samantha, to me. Um, and if you don't, and you want to propose something else, you got to come to us. You got to come.
Yeah, I don't see. That's normally twenty feet to now just all arbitrarily for another house or unit to go on that property to then allow it to be ten feet from the property line. Doesn't make sense to me.
Right. I just want to make sure. I think I'm, I'm there with you. I just, and we do refer, again, the draft that was sent around, does refer to the table a few times. And maybe we just need to think about that, Samantha. Maybe we just need to think about.
Oh, sure, sure. I was just trying to.
Underlying zoning unless.
Yeah, I just don't know who came up with it, Samantha. I just don't know who came up with the ten feet.
It's based off of the accessory, um, accessory structure setback.
Okay.
The accessory structure setback is seven feet, and rather than going all the way down to seven feet,
Yeah.
Um, to be able to allow it on every single parcel, it was ten feet. Um, that was just based off of other existing, um, A D U bylaws that are throughout the state and other ones that I've worked on. Um, and again, incorporating, actually being less lenient than the other accessory setbacks for Wakefield under current zoning.
These are two very different
Yeah, yeah.
types of units, in my humble opinion.
But what we're hearing is it's not, that ten is not mandated by the state statute. That is.
No, just, um, a mandate to not impose unreasonable regulations, whatever that is.
Right, but, but it's not an unreasonable regulation that says, yeah, you can build it just to keep your same underlying setbacks.
There, there there may be situations where that could be legally challenged because of lot size. Um, I, I, I don't know what they are. I'm not, I, I mean, I, I mean, I don't have an explicit example, other than the historic neighborhoods. I know that there's plenty of properties where it could be an issue. Um, but again, it, there, it does come down to the conversation of they have to be allowed N A D U. How the A D U gets built can happen in a variety of ways. It can be in a basement. It can be a subdivision of existing structure. It can be an addition, uh, or a detached dwelling. It doesn't necessarily have to be a detached dwelling. Um, so I don't, I don't know the specifics.
I would, I would argue pretty strongly not to, not to adjust the setbacks allowed. That I would, I would argue pretty, pretty strongly that the underlying setback should be, remain in place and not be adjusted.
And i- unless they want to come and apply, like anyone else would do for any addition to their structure, right? If anyone has a lot, it may be pre-existing non-conforming. It might conform today. They want to do something and it doesn't meet the setbacks. They apply for a variance or a permit or a finding, right? And they come to this board and, and we evaluate the circumstances of that lot. You know, topography, whatever the soil conditions, whatever the circumstances may be, and we may determine that it's okay in that circumstance. So that's where I think, again, I would totally agree with Chip that the underlying zoning should still remain with the stipulation. If they want to do something other than that, they should come to this board. We should still have a bite at that apple and, and review these lots. They still get to potentially have them, but if they're going to go that close to a lot line, I think this board should have a say. That's all.
Dave, I couldn't agree more strongly. I see Mickey nodding his head. So Samantha, I think you have pretty unanimous feedback from this board about this setback issue. And just because, you know, context matters too, you know, not every neighborhood is the same. I agree with Chip.
Sure.
You know.
Sure.
It's, uh, I don't want to beat this dead horse anymore, but I, I, I do want to, um, unless Kasumi and Joe have a different opinion.
Mr. Chair, I put my hand back up because I just, I wasn't totally finished because the conversation went where it went, but so Samantha.
I got other things too.
Lots of other comment, no, and I don't want to get into it here, but I just, I have lots of smaller comments or other comments on that draft. What's the best way to present them to you without dragging this thing out two hours? Can I just send them an email?
Yep, you can just email them directly to me. I'm happy to have a conversation. I'm happy to even jump on Zoom if need be or a phone call.
Yeah, because I, I had lots, you know, some of it sort of minor stuff, but some of it is just understanding where, like I did question the, the five thousand thing. So now we beat that one up, but, um, pretty good. But, um, I did have other things. So I just want to understand the best way to share that with you. And then that you'd potentially be updating that and presenting that before, um, the March eleventh, or you'd be available for that March eleventh.
Yeah, my, I mean, I would like to have it ready for the next planning board meeting, just so it's accessible, um, to everybody, which is what, Tuesday coming up at the end of the month, um, the twenty fifth. Um, so I'll have a copy of that ready and I will disseminate it again, um, to all of the department heads that have, I've met with, um, as well as y'all. And you're more than welcome to bring any comments back. Um, email's always the easiest way to get them to me directly, um, and allow me to readily answer any questions that you may have.
The public, the planning board meeting is the twenty fifth. What's the March eleventh?
March eleventh is a in- information, information session, a formal advertised information session, um, similar to how we did them for M B T communities. Um, it's a hybrid meeting, so it's whether you can come in person or you can show up in Zoom. Just trying to make things more accessible so that people have questions, because I have a ton of people who have been calling me, asking me about A D Us and how it works and when they're permitted, um, by the state. So, you know, right now we're just in a donut hole.
No, understood. I just didn't. Planning board meeting or, or more of a general info session, not necessarily tied to the planning board's public hearing on this matter, you know? It has to be vetted before it goes to a warrant article, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll send you that tomorrow.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, one other comment, uh, because I really only have one, uh, significant one on the, um, the definitions. I just want it to be clear that, that you're introducing, uh, new definitions. It, it's, I'm assuming it's going to be very clear that the, those definitions apply to this section only and not to the rest of the bylaw. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, and with that, anybody else want to comment? You know, you've heard the, um, the offer to, you know, accept comments on lesser things through email, if you saw a, uh, something that you just have a question about.
Hi, Samantha, are you in charge of our S H I inventory or am I barking up the wrong tree?
You're barking up the right tree.
All right, what's our number today?
Well, uh, as Crescent Commons has not pulled a, finalized their building permit, they fell off. Um, and we are, uh, below nine percent. Again, we were above nine percent when, um, they had gone through, but we are below again, um, because they fell off of our S H I, because they have not had any traction. So.
Does that include the, um, the large project at the top of the lake, the eighteen percent there?
No, um, that won't be added until there is, because it's not a forty B. It will not be added until we get C O's. So as every single unit gets its C O of the affordable units, we'll have any, a, a unit added. Um, the Renly is also not included formally yet because they don't have certificate, uh, a certificate of occupancy, which is sixty-two to, I think it's sixty-nine, no, not sixty-nine, sixty-two to seventy-two maybe, um, Albion, no, oh my gosh, Foundry Street, um.
Sixty-two Foundry.
Thank, yes, well, it's a range. Um, it's two individual parcels that were merged. It now goes by, uh, on our notes for our S H I. It has two different addresses. Um, anyway, the, as well as the, um, the lottery, it lists two different addresses. But the, um, the units that are coming online at the Renly, which are ownership units, those will be in as soon as they get their certificate of occupancy. And then Albion Flats at one ninety, Albion will also be added. Those are two units, um, when they get their certificate of occupancy. I am also waiting for one eighty-four Water Street, which converted from ownership to rental or is in the process of doing that. Um, and they have one unit, I think. It's just one unit. Um, I'll have to go back to my notes. Um, that will be, it's going through a lottery now. Um, and as soon as that is done and they get their certificate of occupancy and get someone in, that one will also be added. So we have a number of units that are coming online, as well as a handful of others that I'm doing some research into. Um, so we're getting closer to ten percent.
So we're at nine percent now, and when those things hit, I know they're not forty B projects, but we do have an eighteen percent affordable. So we're, we're, we're on the plus side. Are we even closer? Are we almost at ten percent?
When they all hit, yes, likely we will be at ten percent. Um, I, I don't want to say yes with a hundred percent guarantee, because it does depend on the timeline. Um, and hopefully they'll be done before twenty thirty, when the number changes. Um, I believe they're on track to be done before twenty thirty, but, um, that's really what part of the driving. Um, or I guess when the numbers will change over, if you don't know that already, they change.
It's every two years, am I correct?
What's every two years?
Our reporting to the state as to what our H, S H I inventory is.
No, it, it's on a rolling basis.
Every two years?
No, it's on a rolling basis. When a unit gets added, we, our S H I gets updated. When a unit gets added, a, a new affordable unit comes online, our unit gets updated. But our bottom line number, um, which some people refer to as like the denominator, the number of housing units we have is only changed every ten years. It's changed when the census comes out. So there were twenty twenty numbers, which is eleven thousand and change, and it'll be going up, especially with all of the, um, rental units that have been added. Uh, and the number will be formally released twenty, with the twenty thirty census, and then we'll have a new S H I number.
But then, then the S H I number right now is eight point, sorry, uh, Wakefield.
Yes, it's eight point, I think it's seven, three.
Eight point eight four. So what we're saying is that when these are added, we're going to be at ten percent, and this means a lot.
Yep, I'm aware. Um, the, let me see, I have my internal notes. I can tell you, we are pretty close. Um, I, because the um, Crescent Commons came off, it has fairly heavily impacted. Um, I think we will be just over like ten point one percent, um, once those additional units come online.
And when they come online, does that hit you immediately? Does it hit the state immediately? What you're saying, I thought it was every two years. I might be wrong.
It's, it's not, so nothing is done every two years. There's no, uh, there isn't anything that's, that's done every two years. Um, every single year we are asked to confirm our S H I units and make sure that our S H I is reflecting what we, what our, uh, internal, our town municipal notes reflect, um, so that we have all of the units and they have all the units and that everyone's on the same page. There are some errors and there are some things that I am trying to work out with them and trying to figure out what those are. So, so I say when we're around nine, um, versus the, the eight point something percent that it's actually listed as, that's not accurate, because there are some things that are missing. And so I'm working with them, trying to get that updated. I am happy to share it with you as soon as I get an.
Right in front of me right now. It only has it as a, uh, updated as of June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three for Wakefield.
Oh, gosh, no, I have, I have one from.
I know, but that's the state, that's what the state is reporting. So I want to know that the state has the most up to date S H I inventory. So if we are at ten percent, we don't have to approve forty Bs that are coming in front of us. That's important for this town. That's immensely important for this town. So if there's a delay, if there's a, we're not getting the permit in time, we don't know the numbers, it's enormously important. And to hear that we are just blowing away the last ten years of zoning in this town and um, and, and saying that, um, accessory units are deemed, they don't have to be family members anymore. You're just racing every zoning decision that's been made in this town for the last ten years. We need to figure out these answers. This is not, I, I don't think this is above, uh, above asking about.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Samantha, and I apologize, but I, I find it amazing that we just blew away zoning for the last ten years in the town of Wakefield and that we don't know our S H I inventory, which decides whether or not we have to approve a forty B.
Help me understand what you mean by blown away.
Blown away, meaning if you do not have ten percent, if you have ten percent. Well, oh, let's go back to my first point. My first point is, what you said earlier was the new rule is you can't have rules on accessory apartments. Everything is approved by the state. They're still working on it. We don't have the complete regulations, but that's how it is from now on for the town of Wakefield. Doesn't matter what you decide in the last ten years. Am I right? Is that what you said to me?
Uh, to some de- to some degree, yes, it's on those couple of components that you can't have a familial relation and it cannot be owner occupied.
Going forward or going back in time?
Both. From what I have read from the state and what I have been told is those things are no longer enforceable. Yes.
But they're still working on the regulations.
No, the, they were working on them until February second. They are. No, the, they were working on them until February second. They are.
Until last week, they're working on the regulations.
Maybe they could change them again. I don't know. I, I can't, I, I'm not the state, so I can't speak for them. Unfortunately, I had gotten, like I said, literally four different iterations of them. Um, up until February second. So, February second, they are not supposed to change after that. The EOHLC, the secretary, has released the formal final iteration in the proper formatting that's on the website. If somebody challenges it or somebody questions it, maybe things, things would change. Again, I, like I said, I'm not the state, so I can't really speak to that. But what the regulations say and what I've, I mean, I've sat in so many webinars, um, both from the state, from attorneys, from other municipalities, housing organizations around the area, everybody's been trying to figure out exactly how this is going to play out in reality because it's unfortunate that the state waited so long to put them together. It's unfortunate that they've been having planners, um, municipalities, zoning boards, everybody, building inspectors, anybody who's dealing with any component of zoning, running around trying to figure out what is what. Um, and I'm, I'm like a, just chasing it, trying to find all of the pieces to be able to put them together in one spot. It makes me look like I don't have my stuff together when they keep getting changed and I keep having to send updates to everybody. Um, and unfortunately, that's just where we are all up until now, and I am uh, uh, working on getting everybody's comments so that I can put together another iteration um, and send them out to everybody again. But I am a- again, I, I'm not the state, so I, I can't guarantee that they're not going to change it, but they do have a final version online. And that is what I'm going to be working on the updates from.
That's retroactive.
I'm sorry?
That's retroactive for every town in the, uh, in Massachusetts, including Wakefield.
That, yes, that renders components non, because they are considered unreasonable regulations. If it's owner occupied or has any stipulations on the number of people that can stay there, um, whether it's a familial relation, ages, number of bedrooms. There's a whole handful of things that are listed explicitly in the regulations.
Okay, thank you Samantha.
And just so you know, the SHI list that I have that is most updated, um, I'm not sure, were you getting one offline?
Yes.
Okay, so the last one I had was from, I want to say October, um, but the one that I worked off of when I last had the conversation with the state was dated uh, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And again, it was incorrect. There were units on there that, or there were, they're missing units, a large number of units, and I don't I'm still trying to work out the details with the state. Brian knows what I'm talking about because I have worked with him. I'm trying to get this sorted out because he had worked on it, on the project previously. Um, I've been going back and forth with the state, trying to get somebody to recognize a decision that they had made years ago, and I haven't had any traction. Um, we've had our um, town council helping me, so I am trying my best to get us the units that we actually have and get them reflected on the SHI. I know that the towns, it is important to everybody who lives in the town that we are um, not only offering affordable housing, but also getting, working towards that safe harbor number. The other avenue is through the Housing Protection Plan, which I started literally the day I started working on the RFP. We are currently underway on that and will have that completed um, by the end of May. We'll have the um, plan formal, formalized and able to be presented. After a year, if we're making progress, we have the potential to be certified and then seek safe harbor through that certification.
Thank you Samantha.
I'm, I'm on top of it.
So Mick, I think you dream in anyway with all these AD units that are going to come online, we're never going to catch ten percent, but that's my opinion, but.
I, yeah, I've had, with, there have been a number of different conversations um, with other planners that, and other municipalities that have expressed that concern. And unfortunately, we don't even have an answer on it yet. Um, the EOHLC is asking us to, actually, they're requiring every municipality to keep a register of every single ADU that they approve and give a certificate of documents to. Um, possibly in an effort to try to offset the SHI and the underlying number of housing units, um, because the SHI, you know, has what's referred to as capital A affordable, their formal affordable units. And a ADU in theory should be a lowercase affordable unit. It should be a naturally occurring affordable unit. So they may be trying to giving credit is not quite the right, right word, but um, being able to differentiate between the two um, and allow towns to not be punished or penalized for encouraging or being able to have the development of ADUs. But I don't have an answer because the state hasn't given us one yet.
Thank you.
So is, i- does anyone have anything else?
The only, not, not to, uh, it sounds like Samantha has her hands full, but at our uh, shared meeting with the bylaw committee and ourselves, signage came up and Samantha's name came up with signage. So I think for another night, I'd love to or privately have a conversation about signage because I heard you've been working on something. And having been involved in the last couple drafts of assigned bylaw that never got off the ground, but I think you've been sent a copy of it.
Um, I looked at, I, I have looked at so much uh, related to the signage, probably have looked at what you're talking about um, and reviewed all of the notes, the minutes, notes, everything that was saved from the previous committees that were working on it as well.
Okay, because that I don't think you should try to handle by yourself. Because there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of movement and how Wakefield wants to handle it. So I think whatever we can do to help you with that um, would be good. Um, the other question I have, which I don't think you have control of, but I know Dan's trying to push a lot of his stuff to the spring meeting as well, and Joe's on the with committee with him. Um, do you really, I know if we're recodifying everything and you've got to get ADU inside of that, how does, how does the timing all happen to make it available and happen for Springtown meeting? Because we had a long and hard discussion with, with Dan that we didn't think he was going to be ready for Springtown meeting.
Um, well, uh, you mean, how am I going to get the ADU bylaw ready?
Inserted into something that he's doing. It just sounds like there's a lot of moving pieces.
You mean to shuffle the deck?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know. I will figure it out. I'm happy to.
That's a fair answer anyway.
Um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm been in touch with him and had conversations and emails back and forth about um, a number of different components um, of the, the rewrite um. And in talking about ADUs, everybody was kind of on the same page that it needed to be done separately. Um, when I was talking to everybody back before we even had any, any idea what would be happening. Um, so yeah, the, I will be collaborating and working with him on figuring out what works um, to be able to get it shuffled in to that deck, um, because it's a pretty substantial undertaking that has been going on um, with the Bylaw Review Committee to update the zoning code. Uh, I, I know, and um, I did get MBTA communities together in a very short period of time turnaround. Um, so I am kind of aware of all that goes into being able to get it for a town meeting. Um, and that's, that's the goal is because there's, again, right now, we're in the donut hole. And things are permitted and we don't have any oversight over short-term rentals, which while MBTA communities was going through, it was brought up on a regular basis, either through emails, phone calls, our Zoom or in-person information sessions or hybrid meetings. I mean, it, it was brought up all the time. What's going on with the ADUs? How is this going to impact MBTA communities? We're just going to have a lot more units. Um, you know, I'm really concerned about all the ADUs turning into short-term rentals, all that kind of I mean, it was, it was just a constant um, kind of undertone of mm, concerns. I mean, it's, it's very valid. I, you know, I don't want to belittle or, or dismiss anyone's. I think it's very important that we're trying to be able to meet those concerns um, in a timely fashion. So, still hoping to get it done in time. Um, and I do have a very strict timeline that I've gone over with Planning Board and with the Town Administrator to be able to do that. So I appreciate you fitting me into an already full meeting tonight to be able to get your comments.
Now, this is a light meeting for us, Samantha. Um, actually. So, just to wrap up on the um on the ADU, you know, w- we've heard a lot about what the state's jamming down our throat, through our teeth, and I think what you're hearing from this board is the loss of local control is one of the things that we're very concerned about and is why we want to retain as much of the character of the town as we can. And that setback issue is certainly an important one that we, we beat that dead horse, but I, I want to beat it one more time on the way out the door here. Um, so I hope you strongly consider that. I hope the planning board strongly considers that. And um, the uh, in terms of process that you said, the planning board hearing will be at the end of March. I'm going to suggest to this board that we put comments together um, to submit to the planning board. Um, so Samantha, if you can keep us, I know you, you, you've struggled with the, the the state and trying to keep up with the different versions of that, but if, if we can have something in a timely fashion so that we could put together our thoughts at a meeting for comment to the planning board, um, I'm going to suggest that we do that as a board.
Yeah, my goal, um, just to reiterate and, and make sure that um, we're all on the same page. My goal is to have that done. Um, really in the next day or two, it's, it'll depend a little bit on when I can get a hold of town council for some clarification on some of the components. Um, but I want to get an updated draft done before the planning board's next meeting, which is the twenty-eighth of this month. So I'm still um, trying to get all of that updated. Uh, and as soon as I have an updated copy, I will make sure to send it to you um, for dissemination.
The meeting is February twenty-fifth, not March, right, Samantha?
Did I say March?
No.
Mom, you just said March.
Okay.
I thought I heard March.
Ignore that. It's February twenty.
It's Tuesday. They were the Tuesday before us.
February twenty, I'm sorry, February twenty-fifth um, is the planning board's next meeting. And then.
Or then Tom, so.
Then March eleventh is the informational meet, public meeting.
Okay, that's what I got.
Right, yeah. It's the, so the planning board has their regular meeting, but they're doing a hybrid so that they can have an information session and answer questions for the public or have me answer questions about ADUs. Um, so I'm going to, like I said, I really want to be able to get an updated copy out to the public. It's posted on the web um, as well to the planning board and any other boards that want to have conversation as soon as possible. And trying to get everybody's um, comment back.
And then there'll be feedback from that, so you're likely not done with the planning board.
Yes, I mean, similar to MBTA communities.
Right.
We had, we have like a hundred days from the first, from the forming of the committee to having a draft. So it's a similar kind of process. It's just very, um, you have to be very cognizant of the timeline.
Mr. McGrail, I see your hands up. Did you want to make a comment here?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a general comment. So the only thing that Samantha's saying is, is right from a timing perspective that just to be clear, what the state did to all of the communities with this is they enacted a law requiring ADUs to be by right effective February one. And then they said, legislature said as part of that law, the, you know, livable communities can enact regulations that interpret it, expand on it, regulate it. And the law, as I said, the state said the law goes into effect February one, while they didn't come out with the regulations until February third after the law was already in effect. So that has put in a, you know, an inconjurable stress and pressure on Samantha, all city planners and town planners and boards. Yeah, and um, building departments, Gail, you know, and Ben, that, you know, this is unfairly thrown at towns and cities by the state just after the MBTA. So, you know, you talk about piling on and, you know, and just using all municipal resources to deal with these things, you know? It's kind of like, what's the next thing that's going to come out? Um, you know, it's almost like a Kool-Aid stand. Hey, who has the next good idea that we can implement another law that we can throw out there without giving any time or consideration? So what I would say is there seems to be a fear that, well, we have to get a bylaw in effect for this. I respectfully don't see it. I, I deal with clients, I get calls on this. My answer to clients are, you got to meet current setbacks right now. Um, you're probably in Wakefield, a non-conforming law, so you need a finding. Um, I think there's a fear um, that there's going to be a flood of ADU applications coming in. I don't see it. I think what most lawyers are saying to their clients are, which I'm saying, is municipalities are in the process of enacting um, bylaws. They're going to take time, and until that happens and the dust settles, you're just kind of wasting your time doing this. I, I think, and the other part of it is what the statute says is, it, it doesn't really say they're by right. It says that a town can't have a bylaw not allowing it or prohibiting it, right? So I question whether somebody can go in and get a building permit. They could go in and ask for one. Perhaps Ben could deny them and say our bylaw doesn't allow it. Well, maybe then they would have to file suit to say that Wakefield's in violation. Well, who's going to do that? They're just going to wait for the, for the bylaw to be enacted so they can do it under the bylaw. So I, I just, I just, um, I, I personally don't think, and, and I feel bad for Samantha because of the pressure. I don't, I don't, I don't see the, the, the real urgency that we have to have this on the Springtown meeting. I don't think you're going to get a flood of applications. That's just my personal thought. I'm always one for doing things right, and I think when things are done haste, you know, hastily because of fear, then we have a bylaw that has mistakes and doesn't work. Maybe it can be done. I know Samantha's working really hard on it. I commend her. And, and I'm willing, as a citizen, my own, and a citizen, not as a representing anybody, but as a citizen, happy to help. You know, I went to the, to the um, or I shouldn't say happy to help, happy to give my input is a better way um, that might facilitate. Um, but um, you know, to me, if we get there, great, but if we don't, I don't think it's the end of the world. Um, and, and it could go to the fall. I don't think you're going to see a huge influx of um, of ADUs because you know, just coming to this meeting tonight, your board has raised a lot of um, issues that weren't raised before. And that now have to be vetted and discussed, and then you have to look at it again. So I don't know about the timelines, but we'll see. That's all. But the state, I really feel what the state has done to uh, to all of our planners and resources and boards and municipalities.
That's an understatement, Brian.
All right, Samantha, you want to say something?
Yeah, just quick through the chair. Um, Brian, just so you know, for clarification, um, and, and you'd have to confirm obviously with Ben. I had uh, six different people ask me about ADUs and note their intent to file a building permit as soon as they came through. Um, I had heard that there were some waiting. I don't know exactly what happened, but I, I know that there have been, um, I had an architect who said he already had drawn up plans for his own house uh, to construct ADUs, meeting the state regulations and wanted to know when they went into effect. Um, so I know Gail just popped on. I don't know if you want to, if you're, if you're going to answer that.
You're on mute, Gail. Gail, you got to get yourself off mute.
Yeah, what about that? We've had, I'd say a dozen inquiries, but um, you know, nothing concrete, just more or less questions. We tell them, well, we had been telling in the state, still writing the law. And now the town has to firm up their own laws. Once the town firms up their bylaws, then, you know, they can come in and they just, they go away. Okay, we'll wait. You know, that's what they've been saying. So. Yeah.
All right. Well, this was helpful. At least for me. Um, I hope it was for other board members. Uh, I thought we identified some good issues for, that need to be thought about, so. Out of respect for Samantha's time, um, anything else? Thank you again for coming. We look forward to seeing you on signs, as Chip said. Uh, we'd appreciate if you came to us. Like on this thing, we deal with it, signs, we deal with it. If, if we're the board dealing with it, we prefer to be consulted sooner rather than later.
Oh, yeah, and it's still in draft form, so um, very much appreciated. Oh, yeah, and it's still in draft form, so um very much appreciate comments. If you have anything else that you want to direct. Um, or anything else that comes up that you don't think about, feel free to email me. Um, I'm pretty, pretty quick to respond and happy to. Uh, work, continue working on the draft.
Right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Good night, Samantha.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Annual report. I read it, Gail, it's a beautiful thing.
Thank you.
As, as always, I can't wait for your annual report next year, Gail.
Oh, there won't be one. There will be one, but not from me.
Person who's not on camera right now.
Yes, she's in training.
Um, no, I I checked my notes as I always do, and I think you covered the bases as you all, you know, in the the major projects and all that stuff.
Yeah, so. You always think there's more, but they're, you know.
How much stuff goes over two and three years, you know, like, geez, that was this last year. No, it was two years ago.
Exactly.
You don't call out some of the, you know, the residential stuff, right? It's, there's a lot of that stuff that is sort of in one bullet at the end there, but. There's, there tends to be a lot of that, but.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I had to go back. I'm like, oh, yeah, that was twenty twenty-two. Oh, no, that.
I do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. All right, look good. Thanks, Gail.
Everyone good with it? Gail, do we need to approve that or do you just do?
Yes.
Do we?
Just, yeah, well, yeah, why don't you? Put it on record.
I would make a motion that we approve the the annual report as drafted and sent to us by by Gail.
Second.
All right, motion to be made, seconded, any further discussion, seeing, hearing, non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Chip.
I guess so.
Yeah, Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you so much, Gail. All right, on to uh clerk and board comments. Any other word, Joe, from bylaw committee?
We have a meeting uh the twenty-fourth.
Okay. So you haven't really met since we've met with them, yeah?
No, nothing, no. So um if you would like to attend, I will save a seat for you.
If you're not means of the twenty-fourth, I don't see how you're getting anything into. Brian, what was the deadline for town meeting?
Mine's twelve, one, no way, no. Well, kids, I it's, I I, you have that point, I don't see how it would ever make Springtown meeting, not even close. My personal opinion.
You've had a lot of those tonight, Brian.
What's that?
Personal opinions.
Hey, I'm a resident, Chip. I'm a citizen. Uh, Mister Chip, can you give a piece of information?
Yep.
I have an answer for you on the Renly.
Oh, okay.
Um, the Ren, the Renly is named after the ren bird. So the ren bird is a symbol of change. It represents positivity, creativity, and the potential for growth and transformation. Is one of the first birds to sing at dawn. The ren symbolizes a start of a new day and new opportunities. And they thought that was appropriate with the transformation of Foundry Street.
All right.
There you go.
I wonder how much they pay the consultant for that one. Oh, God.
Have you seen the price of the condos?
Holy cow. They got bar seats for any uh soccer games on the weekend.
Barbecues overlooking the soccer games, yes.
That's right. That's not a bad gig, though, when you think about it.
All right, any other questions, comments, board?
Are we all set for the nineteenth?
Oh, yeah, uh, everybody kind of responded for the nineteenth, which is actually next week.
Fine.
Do we have a spot?
Well, we got the date. Let's, let's one thing at a time.
We'll do it on Zoom, Chip. We'll just do it on Zoom.
Why don't we, why don't we discuss that one offline?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Do we have to, then, are we going to, when's the, oh, we have till April, right? The um town council approving uh new members? Taking votes on new members?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to um, update their uh, assuming you were the only one to apply for the full vote. Membership, so I'm assuming that that will go through and um, but I can never promise what the town council's going to do, so. And then we did have a a person apply uh that I will assume that will fill the uh. Alternate position, so. We'll go there and we still get a few more months of Mickey. He's not getting out that easy.
Write a memo, Mister Chair, just to say, we, with our recommendation.
Well, last time, the 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 chair, I I met with the chair of this uh town council last year. I'm assuming I'm supposed to do the same thing again, but I'm not going to initiate that. Um, if they want. If I don't hear anything from them, I'll obviously put in a letter.
Yeah, at the very least, we should write a letter, just with our recommendation.
Yeah.
So it's on record.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Gone to minutes. Um, I got to relook at January eighth, because that's the date we made our decision, so that's on me. Um, but I think the minutes of January twenty-second are ready to roll. Uh, so we'll be looking for a motion to. Uh, approve the minutes from January twenty-second, and I'll get to the ones on the eighth uh for our next meeting.
Um, Mister Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of our January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
This can be a voice for all those in favor?
I will say the ones from the eight, I I read through them and they, I think you covered it, Gail, pretty, pretty well, but go ahead.
We know she does, but.
Yeah.
That where we might be, um, well, we know, uh, both, uh, just the board should know, both have been appealed to the state. Both decisions, so that that process has started. And we'll see how long that takes. Dave, that's why I'm just doing bell suspends. I just want to read it one more time, because I just, I just haven't had a chance to really get through them all, so. Um, and with that, a motion.
Sure, Mister Chair.
Is always in order.
Hi.
Yep. Have a good night, everyone.